It is 5:30 on Wednesday, June 12th, and I call this meeting of the New London Board of Selectmen to order. First order of business this evening is the town clerk, Will Kidder, on the purchase of ballot machines.
Good evening. I am here sort of on behalf of the elections team, and we're, we've been looking at and evaluating the potential voting machines that we have to choose from, of which we have a choice of two. And Michael and I have zeroed in on the Voting Works system for a couple of reasons, but one, it's a open source software, so everybody can look at the software. And in our world, it's also not a Dominion machine, which has had some bad press. And another geeky but cool thing is it prints on eight and a half by 11 paper rather than the long strips that are not the easiest things to deal with.
Yeah.
So in order for us to continue the purchase of this, we need you guys to make a motion to approve New London's purchase, which I have it in the budget to do for this year, and use of Voting Works ballot system for all elections, starting no later than the election of March 25 in our town election. So that is what I am here to ask of you. And if you have questions, I can answer them.
Any questions in the audience? Janet?
Yes, there wouldn't be available for this November.
No, it would not. It's, it's too much with the state, and yeah, changing in the middle of that is something we want to avoid. So yeah, exactly. We'll take it as it comes, but.
BB, any questions?
Nope, I'm just confirming the price.
Mm-hmm.
Seventy-five hundred dollars.
One time.
One time, and then the $500 annual fee, which is all in your budget.
Correct.
Okay.
Plus, there's a $500 per election programming fee, which is also there.
Okay.
The, the price of it may change, and it may go down, but I can't talk about that yet. But.
You just.
Janet, any?
No, I don't have any questions.
Okay, so I would entertain a motion to approve the purchase and use of the Voting Works ballot system for all elections, starting no later than the town election of March 2025.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I'm going to hold off on the dog warrant. That was a miscommunication between Kim and I about which meeting we wanted that for, so I'll see you two weeks from now when we can actually do that, because it's got to be after the 20th of June.
I don't know, I don't know if we can do that if BB's not here to comment on it.
What is it?
The dog warrant.
Oh.
And by the way, if anybody's listening online, please register your dogs. It's killing us in my office, so if you could get that done, that would be greatly appreciated.
How many are left that need to be?
There's about 50 dogs left at this moment in time.
Okay, this is the time in our agenda when we get public comments. Anybody have a public comment on anything that's not on the agenda? Okay, Tom? No. Okay, moving on to old business, we have an update on the police facilities project, and that update is in fact giving us the opportunity to discuss and sign, if we are willing, the proposed contract with La Valley Bresinger Architects, otherwise known as LBA, to us. I think we've all had an opportunity to look through multiple versions of this. It's been available to the committee to look at. It's been available to citizens if they wanted to see it. I think that the current version dated June 10th addresses many of the items raised during that time, but not all of them, because some of the comments relate to scope that should in fact be discussed by the entire committee, not by individual people. So I think the three things that we want to pay attention to, which I think are all there, are the question of the price, and the price is in fact $69,900 on a fixed fee The LBA can have customary expenses of up to $2,000, $2,200, excuse me. The timeline outlined on pages three and four is approximately 16 weeks to September 30th, which works well, I think, with the rest of our time schedule and getting back to the town. And last of all, there's a two-page in green background that outlines the structure and the work plan for, for us. And those are the three things that we really should be paying attention to. I think by, by now, with the multiple versions of this, we've done that. So I would ask if, BB, if you have any further questions or concerns, or are we ready to go?
Nope. I, I appreciate the time that the committee members have put into this and their comments. I appreciate Colliers working with the architect to get many of those requested changes put into the contract. I had some confusion about the original RFP going out, you know, asking for site plans and test fits with three sites, but I've got it figured out in my head now that the scope has changed a little bit, where one of those sites will be the existing site, and, and then some, some further requests that came from some committee members for additional scope made it so that to make that 69,000 price work, they moved things around, and I'm good with, I'm good with how it looks. And I'm, I'm fine with going in, signing it, getting the work started, so the committee can meet on Friday and jump in.
Right.
Janet?
No, I agree with everything that BB said.
Okay, so BB references the question of the number of new sites that are going to be reviewed in the contract, and she points out in the original proposal from La Valley in January, they were going to do up to three sites. When we got to the first stage of proposal, after we told them they were going to be hired, we were down to, to two because of some of the scope questions. And then furthermore, in order to make sure that adequate time and effort was being put into comparison to the existing site on Siemens Road, we went down to one. That doesn't mean we can't do more sites, it just means that will be in addition to the $69,900. And I think as the summer goes on, we're going to want to talk more about so-called new sites and see what we want to do, but right now, for getting started, the timeline and the, and the scope of the project, see, and this document doesn't require us to say, here's, here's the site or sites that you should look at, other than the existing one.
Right, and for getting an idea, too, of if you have an empty site anywhere, they're going to be creating a conceptual design for a police station, both single story and second, and two stories.
Correct.
And then, and we can then get an idea of what it will look like and what the cost will be, and if the particular site that we're asking them to test fit isn't viable, at least we have an idea and can start looking for another site possible. Do I have that right?
I think so.
Okay.
And I think that our program manager at Colliers has made it clear over the course of the last couple of weeks, as we've gone through this contract, that, you know, active and regular communication with LBA is going to be absolutely critical, so.
Yeah.
You know, we will do that at every one of our meetings.
Yeah.
And as you noted, when we get back to the calendar, we are having the first meeting with them this Friday at 8:30 in the morning in this room, and a public meeting, and everybody's welcome to come. I believe they're going to have quite a few people here.
Do we want to, after we get through signing this, do we want to have a brief conversation about our expectations for the committee?
That would be an excellent thing to do, yes.
Okay.
But before we do that, we'll see if there are any questions to the audience about this. Bob?
I think you have to press the button underneath it, Bob, to activate.
I think I left it on.
Did you? It does, I don't see green.
It was on. I pressed it, it's on. It's on.
Sorry, I didn't see.
I just got confused on the sites.
Bob, would you please?
I'm sorry. My name is Bob Bowers, I'm a resident of New Hampshire.
New London.
New London.
And New.
That too, and New Hampshire. I get around, you know? I walk everywhere.
Good to have you here.
Do I understand three sites, one here and two additional, because you talked about only one site, and I got confused?
We are not, this contract that we're proposing to sign this evening is for two sites, Siemens Road and one other site in town.
Oh, and one other.
Originally, as BB pointed out, it was up to three sites.
Yeah.
That's gotten reduced to two, and one of the two has been identified as being sure that we do this site here.
And when did that get reduced to two? I missed that.
Sometime between January and April. Any other? Rich?
Rich Epstein, New London resident. So I'm, yeah, I'm trying to see if I'm actually following all those subtleties of the, how things have evolved, and you just a few minutes ago talked about a scope change, and if I understood right, what that scope change was, was to make sure that within, that the scope included the current site. So I guess, you know how often we attend these meetings, I never knew that there was a point in time where you all wanted the project to not include the current site.
So, Rich, the original proposal, the original RFP and the proposal that came back from it was not explicit enough that we wanted to include the, this site.
Okay.
The RFP originally went out in the fall. This response is dated January 19th, which was before town meeting, and at town meeting we made it clear that we were intended to include this site.
Okay.
So all we're doing is marching time forward to make sure that this site is part of the stated work and the scope of work.
Okay, so I stated differently, is it really, in some ways, the scope didn't change, what you had to change was to clarify that the scope did, it wasn't clarified, it wasn't clear enough before, is that what you're basically saying?
However you'd like to say.
Okay. Okay. And then it went out to three vendors, right?
Three vendors responded to the original request for proposal.
Oh, okay, was it sent out to?
It was wide, wide open, could be as many responses as wanted, three organizations chose to respond.
Okay, and two out of the three who responded were vendors who worked on Whipple?
Two, two of the respondents were Harriman and Myers, who've had prior experience in working on this project or related projects in town.
Right.
And after consideration and input from the advisory committee, the selectmen decided at their last meeting that we would not award the contract to those two, but rather to the organization that would give us a fresh start.
Okay, but if, if I was understanding what, how things have transpired and what I've heard in the different meetings, that it didn't, it didn't sound like people who worked directly with those two vendors were really brought into the discussion about, about are these good options, because it became kind of clear that people were not too happy, were not that satisfied with those two vendors. So we're kind of in effect, we have an RFP that went to one vendor, and that where two of them were not too, the people who worked with them were not very happy with.
I would characterize it that way. I would say that the discussions that took place, particularly at the most recent advisory committee meeting, suggested that for various reasons it made sense to get a fresh, fresh look. It was, the selectmen were certainly happy with the work that Harriman did, the Building and Facilities Committee raised some questions about that, and went on to hire Myers. They were satisfied with the, the Myers report, but when all is said and done, it was felt that the difference of opinion and the time that's gone by, that we had a third choice that was equally good, equally qualified, I should say.
The same.
So, so why, why not take that, the opportunity to get a fresh set of eyes?
Okay, I guess, I guess I interpreted the opinion of those two vendors differently, but okay, that's how I thought I heard it. The last question, so also in the police committee meetings, they talk about being months behind, multiple months behind, and haven't heard what's been causing these multiple month delays.
Well, the proposal, the original RFP went out last fall, and the proposals came in in January, but at that point, you may recall, there was a petition article for the town warrant, town meeting on the warrant, that would consider withdrawing the ability of the selectmen to spend money on the project.
Okay.
And so the selectmen chose from the time that we received that petition to the town meeting vote to pause.
Okay.
So that was two months there, and then in the three months or two and a half months since town meeting, we've appointed an advisory committee, which was one of the things we should do. They've met twice, and we've, now at our last meeting, we appointed La Valley subject to approving this, this contract. So we really lost time from the fall to March because of the, waiting for the opportunity for the town meeting to vote, and then we've just been getting organized now, and I would say, starting on Friday, we're going to have a 16-week quick run to do a lot of in-depth work and hopefully be prepared by the fall to start communicating options and so on, and have a dialogue with the town once La Valley finishes their work and the advisory committee continues to interact with them and say, yeah, that looks good, that doesn't look so good, I wouldn't take that to the selectmen, and so on. It should be quite an active, interactive process now. It's been a little slow getting started.
Okay.
But we did have that big pause in, in this winter, yeah.
Thank you for the reminder, thank you very much.
Yep. Anybody else? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve the agreement between the town and La Valley Bresinger Architects dated June 10th, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now, back to the purpose of the committee again.
Mm-hmm.
I think we, you know, we want, I think we want to talk with the committee more on Friday, for the benefit of the people in the, in the audience, the selectmen have also posted a meeting for Friday morning, so we will also be here, and I expect we will interact with the advisory committee in talking more to make sure they understand the, the purpose, but where is, oh, here's my file right here. 8:30 Friday morning, right here. So if you recall, the, back in, on April, in early April, we approved the statement that said that the committee was being established to assist us with decisions related to the improvement of the police and communications facilities. The committee will meet with professional consultants, including the project manager from Colliers, to evaluate plans, data, and information compiled by the consultants for the purpose of advising us on the preferred path to taking and improving the facilities to be used by the police dispatchers. The committee will also assist the selectmen in efforts to educate the public on the various options available. My sense is we've reached that point now where the committee's going to go into action. They had a, some say, some of the members had expressed opinions, how about with Rich's comments, on the selection of the architect, but in the end, it was our decision on who to select based on what they had told us and, and so on. I think now, I would be hoping that on Friday morning, we can convince the committee to really roll their sleeves up and work very closely with Colliers and with LBA to do the things stated here. I mean, it's, it's fluid because we don't know what the end result's going to be. But, you know, to me, the language we used originally to say, evaluate plans and information compiled by the consultants for the purpose of advising us, is broad, and they should take that and do what they want with it. It's also, the document that we agreed on says that the selectmen understand that many people have firm beliefs on how the issue should be resolved, and members of the committee have agreed to set aside their current beliefs on the best resolution to this issue, and to approach this task in an open manner, willing to change positions after consideration of information that's provided during the process. So I think, you know, we'll see. I mean, obviously, it's like anything, it's, it's, it's hard to enter into something like this and live in town here and not have some thoughts on the subject.
Yeah.
But I think, my sense is, we asked nine capable people to, of different persuasions, to gather together to work on this with Tony and with, now with LBA.
Mm-hmm.
And I think we need to reinforce that and hear on Friday morning what concerns the members of the committee have about that. You know, we might have done a better job, in my opinion, of sort of schooling them at the beginning, but I think we sort of, we're trying to keep away from it, and probably got too far away from it.
Agreed. I, I look forward to the meeting on Friday, and just, again, I'm, I'm grateful for the nine members that have volunteered to be on this committee. I think it's a really great cross-section of New London residents on that committee, and their work on the committee, I think, will be really valuable to us and to everybody in town. So looking forward to that on Friday, us just reinforcing how important they are in this process, and I'm sure some of them aren't sure, they just, they, they kind of feel like they're flopping around, and they're not really sure what their purpose is right now, so I feel like the architects also are very experienced and will be able to explain to this committee as well what their role will be, and how much support they will need from that group, so looking forward to the meeting.
I think Friday morning is going to be a sort of, sort of a re-kickoff, if you will.
Exactly, I agree, I agree.
But we needed to get LBA in place.
Yes.
And I'm actually delighted that Tony moved the meeting forward a week.
I know.
And, and took the initiative to assume that we would be able to approve this tonight so that.
Yeah.
They could get paid for being here.
Yeah.
Oh, we've got the sun for you now, Janet.
Yeah.
Janet, do you have any other questions?
No, I don't, you know, I, I think we, the four options that we mentioned to the committee with regard to renovate the existing facilities, remove the existing facilities and build new, build new police facilities on a new site, or renovate an existing building on a new site, I mean, those are the four things we're going to be asking them to do, and I think the architect will be able to guide them through that process.
Okay, if we're all right on that, I think we'll.
Yes, thank you.
Move ahead, and the next item on our agenda is to review 12 abatement proposals, recommendations from the assessors. We have the, the listed here, we've all seen the detailed write-ups of, of those, and so what I'm going to suggest is that I will just read them off for the purpose of the public document here, and, and then we'll take a vote on the denials and a vote on the grants, all right?
Okay.
So the assessors have asked us to deny the abatement requests from Mazdowski, Furlong twice, Chellus, and Ellison four times. Do I have a motion to accept that recommendation?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and then we, the assessors have recommended that we grant abatements of various amounts, which we've seen, to Pleasant Corner LLC, Cynthia White, Davison Smith, and Barth Family Trust. If we are in agreement on those recommendations, I'll take a motion to approve those.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next item is, Lynn, we have a request for the use of the Communications Capital Reserve funds.
Yes, I do. So, and this is actually an expense that was, was paid out back in October, but I realized that I had never brought it to you guys to actually reimburse from the Capital Reserve. It was a, it's servers that were used in the dispatch area, and from Belltronics, they gave me a description. I know the memo I, I wrote for you is that there's, it's due to servers reaching their end of life and needing to be replaced. I had someone reach out and ask if I could get an expansion of that explanation. So basically what they're saying, Belltronics told me, is that the server computers that were replaced in September of 2023 are the original servers from AVTEC radio dispatch console deployment from January 2016. They were running obsolete and unsupported Windows 7 operating system. So in order to continue, maintain, and support the dispatch console, these, the computers had to be replaced before they fail, we can't wait for a failure to do so. They are the primary and redundant controls for the entire AVTEC dispatch console. So the new servers are up to date, running currently supported OS, and allow for future firmware and hardware updates as needed. I was also asked if we are working on getting things into the cloud, and my understanding, and I spoke with the chief about that, and yes, a lot of what they do right now has been migrated to the cloud, they're still working on other items, there are some things that can't be migrated because the software that is used is too old to support that, and they also have all the old records from the old dispatch system are still on this server, so. The amount that I'm asking is $12,410, and that will leave in the communications equipment in the Capital Reserve, $229,725.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
Nope.
Any questions in the audience? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the use of Capital Communications Equipment Capital Reserve to the amount of $12,410, as described by Lynn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next is a request by the Chamber of Commerce for use of town property for hospital days. That's as to allow alcohol to be served on the chamber events at hospital days. It's something we've done in the past, we took a couple of years off, and the chamber has come back and said that its members have found that the events are more successful if they can serve beer and wine. And they have a outside licensed bartender.
Okay.
To take care of the liability.
This is only for one night, right?
Yes.
No, it's two nights.
Two nights, one, two nights.
Two nights.
Two nights, yeah.
The first and the second.
Okay.
So this is for Meet the Chamber Night on August 1st and Chamber Band Night on August 2nd.
Okay.
Questions from the audience? Now I'll entertain a motion to approve the request of the chamber to, to serve alcohol on the town property on August 1st and August 2nd, with the provision that they, for beer and wine only, and that they use a independent mobile liquor license to serve it.
And they're paying for a police detail?
And they're paying for a police.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Library? There you go.
Thomas Carley, I'm a New London resident. The trustees of Tracy Memorial Library have approved Emma Phipps as an alternate trustee. So we need you, the select board, to approve her as a alternate trustee, and we'll get her sworn in.
I think we all know who Emma Phipps is.
We do.
Some better than others.
Yeah.
Janet, you know.
I have a question. So if Emma does this, she, and she wants to run for Tracy Library trustee, she would do that at a, the person who is an alternate does not have to run for the position?
No, and I can tell you from personal experience, I was an alternate a year ago, and one of the trustees resigned, and I took her slot, and her term ended in March of this year, so I ended up having to run again, it was a short term.
Oh, okay.
So she could, if we get a resignation from one of the trustees, depending on when that person was elected, it could be anywhere from a partial year to two and a half years or whatever.
Okay, I got you.
But somebody's got to resign before.
Right.
We would move up an alternate.
Before you can run.
Yeah.
Okay.
But it's also possible that Emma could, in the next election, just run in general.
Yes, there's nothing that prohibits her from doing that.
Right.
I, I think what, what I would add to what Janet is saying is, before, I would be anxious to vote to put her on the library trustees as a permanent member, a long-term, regular member, I'd like to have seen her stand for election. I'm just, that's on a, my opinion.
Yeah, well.
I, I do not like the idea that alternates can avoid the election process by coming in this way.
Well, we've, we've actually had an alternate get promoted the last two years, and I, I think the.
Without be, having run?
Exactly, they filled, they filled a, a partial year term, that was Joanne Palmasano and myself.
Really?
That was Joanne Palmisano and myself. And then she ran again in March of '23. And I ran again in March of '24. I think it's invaluable experience to bring alternates on just because they get to come to the meeting, the meetings, they're non-voting. They get a feel for what's done at the trustee level. And if for whatever reason we get a resignation, we've got someone we can plug and play.
Happy to bring an alternate on. I'm just saying that in the long run, they should run for office.
I agree 100%.
Not, not just simply be able to be continually renewed without ever running.
Yeah. But for them to be renewed, it, somebody's got to resign.
Right.
And we may not be in that situation.
I think you have another alternate that we approved recently, too.
David Klick, yes. I guess that my understanding is we can get up to three.
And I think David had ran for, ran at one point. Or he was.
He's run twice, actually.
Yeah.
So did she approach you to, to do this? Or did someone reach out to her? Because you needed another alternate.
We reached out to her. Just because, you know, it's just managing your risk. You never know what's going to happen. And, you know, the, the deeper your bullpen, the better off you are.
Okay. So I will entertain a motion to approve the appointment of Emma Phipps as an alternate of the library board trustees.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, Tom, you don't get off with the telling us about your new director.
Our new director?
Don't you have a new library director?
Oh. Is that public information? I haven't been.
I, I've heard it from a member of the committee.
Okay.
The trustees, the gentleman coming, I think, from Arizona.
Richard, and I can't remember what his last name is. He's an employee of the Flagstaff Library Organization. They're set up differently. They're, they're city employees. And he oversees seven libraries with 44 employees. He's been there, I think it's seven years. He's going to start.
When is he starting?
July 1.
And when is he moving here?
Uh, between now and then.
The reason I ask is we would love to have him be able to come to our town forum on June 27th and be introduced to the community if he's, as we're going to do with the new.
Actually, we, we talked about that at our last trustee meeting. You will have brought that up. I personally don't know what his schedule is in terms of physically arriving here.
If you would go back and extend an invitation on our behalf that he'd be there, we would love to introduce him to the community.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Sorry to put you on the spot. Okay, town administrator's report. Do you have a report, Lynn?
I just want to say we miss our town administrator. We've been holding it together. We're okay. But she definitely, oh, she does a lot. So, but other than that, I don't really have a lot to report. Things have been, things have been all right.
And I'd like to say that you have done a fantastic job of managing, balancing things, keeping your sense of humor and so on. I'm sure that Kara and Will and Adam and others have helped you with that. But you've been the face of it to us. And thank you for what, what you've done. Your Saturdays, your Sundays, holidays.
The, the office is, it, it, it's a well-oiled machine right now. And everybody does support everybody else. So it's, it's, you know, it's been great that we, you know, can do that.
Thank you. Thank all three of you for hanging in there for the two weeks. Okay, other committee meetings, Janet?
I don't have anything.
You don't have any?
Nope.
Jeez. Sorry.
No fire, no water?
No.
No lakes?
Fire is next week. I think. Or no, not, I don't know. Whatever it is, it's not.
BB?
Yes. So I had a busy day yesterday. Yesterday, a group of volunteers spent the whole day on phase one of the Buckland Beach Project, which involved the creation of a rain garden running along the side of the beach, closest to the road where that granite bench is located, and the dead trees, which are going to be taken down. It involved digging out some of the sand, placing a railroad-type pressure-treated wood to outline the garden, installing a water drainage system, and planting a series of rain garden-type plants. The group included members of LSPA, LSPA neighbors, and me. I showed, I showed up for the last hour to throw some plants in the ground so it looked like I was volunteering. But the group was amazing. They started out first thing in the morning and they were there till four o'clock yesterday.
Did Public Works help them?
Yep. Bob and, well, no, actually, no. Bob and Sam came down and, and sort of, you know, looked around to see exactly what they were doing to talk, and talked about, you know, further maintenance that will be involved, which isn't a lot for this portion of the project. The phase two of the project will be in the fall. And that will involve that drainage area on that far right side of the beach at the end of the parking lot.
Right.
So I just want to give a shout out to Mike Morgan for organizing the project. Jeff Lazott from the LSPA, who's the watershed director, really kind of forged this project with this whole watershed management plan. Charlie Hirschberg was there engineering the whole thing. And then this gentleman, Nick, and I didn't catch his last name. I think he's a neighbor of yours there. He used to be the landscape director at the Fells. And he's the one who got all the plants, ordered all the plants and was teaching me how to plant them and put them in the ground.
Green side up.
I wasn't that bad. I wasn't that. No, it was, it was great, though. And it's beautiful. So take a ride down there and see it. They did a really, really nice job. And then I attend, I attend the housing commission meeting last night, where they had the folks from the resilience planning and design group that is going to be running that project that, as a result of the HOP grant that Peter Nichols got, the $103,000. They did a very detailed presentation of the three phases of the project. The first will be the, and correct me if I'm wrong, Epstein's, because you were there last night, too. The first will be the discovery phase, which will basically be doing, taking a baseline of existing conditions, including land use and housing types currently in town. Also, part of that phase will be a group out of Cambridge called RKG, where they will be doing all sorts of data research and doing a report on demographics and housing statistics and trends and, you know, everything going on in town, which is, I feel like something that people really asked for when they were confused about the zoning votes in the last town meeting. Like, do we really need these detached ADUs? Do we really need more workforce housing? This kind of reporting will give us all of that data so we can really make those better decisions. And also a gentleman named Mark Forgere will be doing an assessment of our current zoning ordinances. I think I heard that right. The second phase will be the visioning phase, which creates a potential, a plan of potential housing opportunities, open space, conservation opportunities, and also collect feedback from the community. The third phase, called pathways, will give us the roadmap to move forward whether we decide to do something with it or not. At the end of each phase, there will be community events that will build as, like a speaker series. We talked a lot last night about how we're going to, you know, like the age-old problem, right? How are we going to get the most community members to attend those things? What's the best time of day to have them? They've been, they do a lot of this with lots of different towns. So they had, I felt like they had a lot of good experience. We talked about, or they talked about a logo and branding of this project. So people floated around some different names to use and some, you know, graphics to use. Anyway, the project should take about 18 to 20 months. It was, it was a great presentation. Fill, fill in where I might have left off. I thought, where I might, where I might have left out something. But I think it's exciting. And I really, a shout out to Peter Nichols for working so hard to get that grant. And, you know, this is not New London tax dollars paying for this. This is a grant. And it's going to really benefit the town, looking in the future. Yep.
Fantastic. Okay. You want to add anything? So Monday night, the, the Epsteins and I went to the Water Precinct monthly meeting. And they seemed to be very pleased with the progress that's going along with the project here on Main Street. They have had no major issues. A couple of traffic direction things, apparently, but that's about it. I thought the interesting thing is that they've determined, now that they've gotten down and seen what the digging is like and so on, they think there's going to be 23 days of pipe laying to accomplish this across all three phases. So that you can sort of take those 23 days and figure it probably takes three times that because of all the other stuff from paving to, you know, setting up and so on. So it turns out it's probably a three-month project, just as we'd guessed.
September, so around the end of September, is that?
Yeah. So I think they're working, they haven't gotten anything to make them think it's going to be a nine-month project, which is great news for us.
That is. Because I've been hearing November thrown around.
I think, you know, the, the big issue, it's going to be the next two phases as we get into where there's a lot more dense development along Main Street and a couple of the restaurants and so on. The only place that is impacted by tomorrow night's closure is Peter Christians'. And they have been personally notified and did not indicate any complaint about it. So I guess by eight o'clock on Thursday night, they're, okay. There was an issue about Blue Loon and making sure that when they start their night's work at midnight, they'd be back on, that the parent had been assured they will be.[1722.82]